Good evening. I'd like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting for the City Council, of the City Council for the city of Calistoga. It is Tuesday, August 21st, 2018 at 6:03 PM. City Clerk Flamson, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Thank you very much. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Here.
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Councilmember Kraus?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunsford?
Here.
Mayor Canning?
Here, thank you very much. And if you haven't already done so, please silence or mute your cellphones. And if you'll please join and stand for a salute to the flag, after which, we're going to take 30 seconds in memory of a very well-known and supportive Calistogan, Jim Summers of Summers Estates, who passed away yesterday.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As most of you know, Jim was an icon in the wine industry throughout not just Napa County, but beyond, and a well-known Calistogan who has done a lot in this community and made it a better place to both live and work. So please keep his family in mind, and in particular, his wife Beth. So, thank you. We will now move on to oral communication. This time is set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters on the consent calendar or matters of municipal concern that are not on the agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, also known as the Brown Act. However, the council cannot consider any issues or take action on any request during this comment period. Speakers are encouraged to limit their comments to three minutes maximum so that all speakers have an opportunity to address the City Council. And as a reminder, as of 2012, this council adopted Rosenberg's Rules of Order, so we are maintaining the three-minute rule. There is no allotment of your time to another speaker. I do not have any speaker cards for anyone under oral communication, but is there anyone wishing to address the council on a non-agendized or on a consent calendar item? Not seeing any movement in that direction. We will close oral communication. I'll entertain a motion to adopt this evening's agenda as presented unless a modification is requested.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Kraus. I have a second by Vice Mayor Dunsford. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Council requests and ideas for discussion. Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Just a reminder for this coming Friday, starting at 4:30 PM, the grounds of the elementary school next to the At Valley Family Center will be the fitting celebration anniversary of the, of the family center and is gonna be a great celebration for the whole community. It's a good opportunity, therefore, come and meet all the agencies that they, most of them are located in Napa, that they can come here and provide services for our community, including for seniors and kids, like health and housing, all kinds of services, so you can get more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barnes?
Just one thing, reminding everybody here and at home that we're coming up on an incredibly important election. If you're not registered to vote, you still have time, please register. If you are registered, make sure you vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kraus?
Yes, I'd just like to say something briefly about Jim Summers. I knew him for almost 20 years. He was always a very generous person with all of the service clubs and fundraising activities that might occur within the city. So his absence will be felt many places in this community. So, as we stated earlier, I also know Beth, and I'm a little acquainted with his daughter, and is a big loss.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dunsford?
Nothing to add.
Thank you. I too was just gonna make mention of the 15th Annual Back-to-School Event, which is a fantastic gathering of the community. It's held out at the Berry Street Park at the elementary school. Lots of fun to be had, so come be supportive of your local school district. And it has been requested of me by a few residents from around the community to remind the community that after garbage day, your barrels shouldn't remain on the curb in front of your house for days on end. There is actually a municipal code that requires you to remove them within 48 hours, 24 hours, Dylan? One of the two?
Off the, off the top of my head, I'm not sure, but we'll make sure and find out.
But certainly not until the following Thursday.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, with that said, we'll move on to City Manager's Report. Dylan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few items first, just so council is aware, at one of your past meetings, you directed staff to prepare items, which have been approved by council for placing a tax measure on the ballot. So this measure would increase the city's annual transit occupancy tax rate from 12% to 13%. That additional 1% would be dedicated solely to affordable and workforce housing. I just want to provide information to council, the public, that we have submitted all the necessary paperwork, which includes the ordinance, the resolution, in addition to the arguments in favor of the measure. So residents can make themselves aware, that will be on Calistoga residents' ballots on the November 6 election.
And as a reminder, TOT is not paid by local residents, it's paid by visitors who stay in our hotels.
And it should be noted that every other jurisdiction in Napa County is also doing the same thing, both the county and the other four cities.
And the funds, which in Calistoga, that 1% total, and all of it stays here, totals about $560,000 to $600,000, that will be added annually to our Affordable Housing Fund.
Correct. Thank you. Just an informational item, the city began work already on our fiscal year 2018 audit. It kind of feels like the city goes through budget process, then audit process, then budget, then audit, but that's just our commitment to financial transparency. When people have questions about your city finances, we want them to be aware, we want them to inquire, we try and provide timely, timely information, accurate information as quickly as we can. But we're already underway with auditing last year's books, even though we just started the new fiscal year. Last item that I'd like to provide council a quick update on, as you're aware, a couple of years ago, the city approved a contract to lease the 611 Washington Street property to a group called Corporation for Better Housing. They've been under construction for a little over a year, about a year and a half now, on the senior apartment complex at Lower Washington. And it was recently brought to our attention, city staff as well as council, that there was at least one resident, possibly other residents, who were concerned about some of the issues going on with the project, and I wanted to provide just a brief update to the City Council. The project, when it was originally scheduled and approved for construction, their anticipated opening date was in April or May of 2018. Similar to, you know, many situations and projects around the county, the fires from 2017 did have an impact during the construction of the project. There were multiple times where PG&E was delayed in responding to the project, including setting the utility pole for the project itself. Additionally, the recent fires at the Mendocino Complex also had a major impact even on our project, as we were getting ready to finalize utility work, certain utility contractors were brought off of the project to go address, basically prepare utilities to repopulate areas which had been evacuated. So even our project, where we didn't have fire in the area, are still being impacted from fires last year and even this year. So some of these major construction delays have been caused by events and activities that we anticipated would happen, but we didn't know the full extent of the impact. As of August 18th, which was last Saturday, Corporation for Better Housing began moving people into the apartment complexes. One of their goals was they did not want people to move in, seniors to move in, and have to make a lot of minor tweaks and changes here and there, as with any construction project, there might be projects after the project is completed. But people have moved back in. As of yesterday, at about 1:00 PM, 26 of the 30 units had been leased, and people are already scheduling their move-in dates. Some of the concerns that we had heard were issues related to, you know, drywall cracking, or there possibly safety issues. The city really wasn't aware, other than just some, some general claims that were made. The building official did give temporary occupancy on July 27th, which is essentially a clear that there are no health and safety issues in the building, continue your, your construction activities and work. And then a final permanent occupancy permit was issued on August 14th, which was last week. So from our perspective, the project has moved forward very quickly, aside from some of these construction timelines and delays issues. We're very pleased with the project. I did reach out to the executive director. They continue to receive a lot of praise from residents who are moving in, they're very happy with the product. They did offer, since we're a partner to this, this project, they did offer for anyone from the city, including council members, if you'd like to take a tour, they would love to offer a tour of the facility. So we'll continue to keep our ear to the ground. We've been pleased with the work they've done on another project here in town, and we're looking forward to having this new 30-unit senior project here in Calistoga. And with that, that's my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And as a reminder, that's the project at the end of Washington Street toward the Little League Field, 30 units of housing that's affordable for income-specific senior citizens, that this council chose to acquire that parcel of land using affordable housing funds that were contributed from the two resort projects being built currently and partnered with Corporation for Better Housing. So that's a big win for the community, and it's a beautiful building. They've got common community space that they're actually going to be partnering with Rianda House to offer programs to senior citizens in Calistoga, whether you're a resident of that building or not. It's gonna be open community space for luncheon learns and seminars and exercise classes, et cetera. So it's another big, big benefit to our residents that we're able to achieve.
Dylan, when you get that scheduled, would you let me know? I'd like to take that tour, please. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yes, based upon some comments that reached me, I personally went down to the senior apartments on Saturday, and the office was closed, so I didn't get a chance at that time to speak to the management. But I did get to talk to four of the people who were either just moved in or moving in. The frustration that they have is that they didn't feel that they were communicated with well about the delays. All four of them told me that they had a lot of patience, and that they were very happy with the, with the outcome. They were happy with their unit. I went back on Monday to talk to the management. I was shown a unit, and this is not a luxury apartment house. This is a plain apartment. It's LEED certified. It has a lot of energy savings and water-saving features in it, but it is not what I would call a custom home or luxury apartment by any stretch of the imagination. It's fairly utilitarian. So, that given, the other thing is, is that rents over there start at $485 a month, which is amazing that they were able to put that together. Not everybody, the rent is based upon a need.
Your income.
Type of a thing. So the baseline is $485. So I think that some of the criticisms were probably valid from a lack of communications standpoint, at least for some of the people, but I think that overwhelmingly, the people that are moving in down there are very grateful to have a new home at a very reasonable price, and the people that I talked to are gonna make great residents of the city, and I'm excited, so.
So you call it utilitarian, I call it a blank canvas for them to create their home in.
Okay.
[laughing].
You can tell someone that works for the Chamber of Commerce.
They can paint it the color they want. All right. With that said, we're gonna move on to Proclamations, Presentations, and Awards, and this evening we have a presentation from Upper Valley Disposal Company, so sharing time with us today. Please introduce yourself and what your role is with the organization you represent.
Good evening. My name is Bryce Howard. I'm with Upper Valley Disposal Services in Clover Flat Landfill. I'm the general manager for both companies.
Welcome back, Bryce. Thank you.
Thank you. So we, as we probably all know here in Calistoga, we had a fire of some significance on August 6th. Prior to that, we had a couple of other ones that were smaller on June 22nd and July 4th. Those two previous ones were primarily caused by overheating of compost material that we were processing on-site. We took some steps to try and correct that. We think we had that under control, and what happened on August 6th was more of a fire that started in our trash, not in the actual compost piles. That's where we believe it started, and I think that's primarily what the Fire Marshal's conclusion was as well. So let me go through our quick presentation on what took place on August 6th. There we go. So this is just a view of our facility on July 24th, several days before. You can see different features there, a lot of grass sort of in the foreground. Then as you get sort of above where all the grass line is, you get up into where the actual active areas. This is July 24th from an aerial view. The things of note here, the long sort of rows there are actual composting material or storage of products, green waste, wood chips, things like that. The sort of lighter material that's off to the right of that is the actual refuse. And then if you look to the north, you'll see some gray and some brown. Those slopes are, you'll see another picture of it, it's a slope that is covered in wood chips or old green waste that we use as an intermediate cover, and is allowed by our regulatory agencies. Also, most of that area is covered in like a wood chip or a green waste product that we use to cover our slopes with. This is August 8th, so this is the day, or two days after the fire. So, do you mind if I go up to the screen?
Do we have a mic for him, Kathy? We do have a vast home audience who wants to hear you.
So the, the aerial, let me stand, I guess, over here. So, so this area in here, you can see where the smoke is, and this area is where the fire sort of started. This whole area in here is covered in green waste chips, and this area up here, sort of an intermediate cover that's allowed by our regulatory agencies. Unfortunately, as the fire started in this area, it migrated down into this whole slope here and caught on fire, and that's primarily where a lot of the smoke came from. All this is soil up in here, it's a cut slope that we have. So this area was the area where most of the burning took place. These are our compost areas. That was the area that was on fire, or became a smaller, much smaller scale fire earlier. Also, on August 9th, what the regulatory agencies required us to do was to go in and recover all of our slopes with soil, to recover the trash with a soil cover every night. So this is the part, this is the starting of this project, of recovering the slope with soil, so that there's nothing, or limited amount, that can burn. This is an aerial view of that. So this slope here, as you saw before, was in gray, now it's covered in that sort of orange soil, and also down here, we covered this slope in soil as well. So the idea was to ring the whole active area with a soil ring or a soil blanket. So since that August 15th arrow, we have now completed that soil cover, the regulatory agencies, regulatory agencies came back and said several things we need to do. As you can see, the first bullet was soil being used as daily cover. That's to cover the landfill every night with soil. We had covered it in the past with an alternative daily cover, which is a wood chip product, and when the landfill caught on fire, the wood chips got on fire. So now we're covering that with soil. Recover all the existing slopes of the active landfill with soil. We also have not been accepting any more green waste or wood waste up there for composting, so there's no more product that can, that can burn up. We removed all of it from site as well. It's all that's, all that's been gone now. We have a full-time spotter that we actually have at the working face of the landfill to sort of track, to see if anything comes in that might be flammable. We also have employees out there now 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. We didn't have that in the past. After each incident, we would have that for about a week or so, but now we have that full-time. We'll have that through the season, probably into November. We've also been required to hire a site manager for a facility. We've had a vacancy in that position since February. We've also gone ahead and done a perimeter fire access road that we've hired Gelati Brothers to do. They've completed that work. We've also completed a secondary access for all of our neighbors. We have some neighbors in the area that have a primary access, and we provided them a secondary access onto our property in case a fire cuts off their primary access. That's something they came in and requested from us, that's something we provided. We, onsite, we have a 55,000 gallon tank of water onsite. We added another 12,000 gallon tank of water as well that the fire department requested from us. And we're also putting in a new water well. Unfortunately, our water well went dry last year, and that caused us some problems in trying to refill those tanks. Lastly, the fire department has required us to put together a fire prevention control mitigation plan, which requires some new pipings, new water lines for up there, and we're working with cement engineering, that's due to the fire department the first week of September. And then lastly, SES engineers who we hired to develop some retention basins, so we have an even more water supply. We're shooting for something in the million gallon plus storage area. So part of the challenge we're having out at Clover Flat Landfill is that several years ago, we used to bring in wood chips and green waste, and we would process it into compost, or we would send the wood chips off to biomass plants to be incinerated and turn into power. Biomass plants in California have been shutting down. Back in the 80s and 90s, or about 60 of them, now we're down to 23. The problem is there's cheaper fuel sources than, than burning wood chips, solar, wind, and natural gas. And also part of the problem is that we have a large area in the Sierras that have a lot of dead trees, millions and millions and millions of trees have died up there, and the state has mandated that 80% of the biomass that is, that is paid for comes out of those high hazard areas. So what that really does to us who produce urban wood from recycling of CND material, it prices us out of the marketplace. We don't have a place to take that material. So we're in the, in the moment, we're looking for those avenues, those outlets. So we've had increased tree mortality, we've had an increase in building with a stronger economy, we've had cow green, which is a diversion requirement for CND, and what that does is you just, the whole marketplace is getting flooded with a wood chip type material that we've had a problem moving. So what that means to us locally here is that the biomass plants are no longer taking our wood chips. On one of those slides that you saw, there was those long rows of the yellow, that's our wood chip product that comes off of our CND recycling program. The biomass plants are no longer taking that fuel from us. They've got too much inventory already, and so there's a, there's a problem in trying to get rid of that. So we're looking for other outlets, and it's been difficult. For right now, we're landfilling all that material, so we don't store it up there on site, and so that it can't be a fire hazard. We are looking at some other places. We are partner in a facility out in Zamora, which is out in Yellow County. We're looking to move it out there. We're contemplating that sometime September, October. We have a piece of property up in Lake County that we might use some of the green waste to till into the soil up there, and there are some oversea opportunities, but I really feel those are not really viable at this time. Also, we have a permit to put a power plant on our site that actually uses wood chips to generate more electricity, but that's something I think is a little farther off as well. It's an option we're looking at. I think that's all of my presentation, unless there's any questions from anyone?
Yes, and then?
Okay.
If we have any questions for either of you.
Thank you for, well, he kinda hijacked us, 'cause I was already coming here to talk about the recycling market change, and then we had a fire, and so it was important to let the community know about what's going on in Clover Flat. So, we let Bryce go first. My name's Christy Pestoni Abreu. I've been working for our family business for 30 years, and it's kind of an unfortunate time right at the moment, because I kinda cut my teeth on the recycling back with AB 939 in 1989, when the state of California said all cities and counties have to start recycling. And Calistoga was the first town in Napa County to adopt a program and started a curbside recycling program. I think those of you in the Lions Club back in the day might have remembered and maybe helped, help us roll the program out. I actually drove the refuse collection truck that collected those recyclables, so I know firsthand what it feels like. In any event, in January of this year, the Chinese government, who has, well, actually China, has been purchasing about 80% of Californians' recyclables over the last 25 years. And they have a new president, and their president has aspirations for a green economy. It was first known as the National Sword, China's National Sword, that said, "We no longer want to take your recyclable materials," and then they changed it to Blue Sky, which is their sustainable program for 2050, which they're looking towards to clean their air, their water, and their soil. And so we're excited that they're taking these measures to have a clean country, and the unfortunate part is, is that our country and the state of California actually didn't keep up with the times of creating infrastructure for these materials. So the state has mandated that we recycle and get to these diversion goals, but they didn't back up building facilities within our own communities, or within the state, or within even neighboring states, to create factories to make these materials into new, new items. So, as a result, the, the main products that we're having a problem moving are some of the plastics and some of the fibers. And so this, this slide that you see here goes back to January of 2017, and the blue bar is the scrap plastics, and the orange bar are mixed papers. And so, that's in 2017, I think they were, we were moving 200,000 tons of mixed paper, and it looks like 75,000 tons of, of scrap plastic. Today, we're moving basically zero. And as of this week, the Chinese government is also putting a 25% tariff on top of the zero amount that's moving. So if and when they do open back up their infrastructure to take our products, there will be an additional 25% tariff on top of the amount that they're probably gonna charge us to take our materials. The other thing that, that they're demanding is that the materials must be cleaned to like 99.9% clean. So that means there can be less than a half a percent of contamination in a bale that's going to one of their facilities. And so that's a pretty hard thing to do. Never before did they say the material had to be cleaned. In fact, they had different grades. If your material was kinda dirty, you, you paid. If the material was really clean, they might have paid you. So they created the scale of how, basically, our whole recycling processing system works, based on what materials they were processing. So we've taken the step to, most, all of Californians that are recycling processors has taken the step to clean up the stream. There's only one change that we made, we mailed it out in our July newsletter, that we're no longer taking plastic bags. Most of California has already banned the plastic bags, so we felt like we were kind of one of the companies that just hadn't adopted that yet, and that's mainly because we do a lot of hand sorting. We have about 16 employees that work in our MRF, our Materials Recovery Facility, that's the technical word for the Recycling Processing Center. So anyway, I have a crew that's on the streets right now, and we're tagging all of the blue carts. We also have these nice little door hangers that say do's and don'ts about recycling. About 19% of what we get in that blue bin is not recyclable. So I spent three days up here in Calistoga, three different Thursdays in the mobile home parks, and I did lid flips. parks, and I did lid flips. And I can tell you that we have a lot of work to do. This happens to be a mobile home park in St. Helena, and as you can see, it's full of things that are not on that list. So anyway, this is just a walk through our Materials Recovery Facility. You can see there's a lot of stuff that is not on the list that we're getting. And so we're just going about and asking our communities to really focus on that label and following what's in the newsletter and what's on the website. And if you have any doubt, you should probably throw it out. This is what the new label looks like. We also have new refuse collection trucks, and these trucks have new safety sensors. And unfortunately, the arms on the new trucks are much wider than the old trucks, and so that means that the bins need to be really placed a little farther apart. So we've been having a bunch of challenges with that. So this sticker actually shows how to place the carts. And I know in multifamily areas, it's very difficult to get these carts picked up. So we're actually having to spend more time out of the truck than moving things around. So we appreciate everybody's help in reading through this material. And if you have any questions, just give our office a call, and we'll happily walk you through the do's and the don'ts. So that was us in the mobile home park in, I think that was Ranch of Dinapa a couple weeks ago. Anyway, right now, we have, out of all the materials that we're collecting, we have only a little window in the plastics department where we're having trouble, and that we process about 6% of the materials. We collect our plastic, and of that 6%, there's about 2, 2 and 1/2% of the plastics that we're not moving. And so we're kind of just holding on to them for now until we absolutely can't hold on to them any longer, and there's not a new option. But we're hopeful there may be another option. Some products are going to Mexico, Vietnam, and Thailand. Now, all of our products can't go there because there's not enough port space, and there's not enough infrastructure. But we're hopeful that China will maybe reopen their program with this cleaner allocation that will be necessary. And we're hoping to be able to meet that standard when it happens.
Thank you very much. Jim, can you turn those lights on? So between Bryce and Kristi, prior to the fire situation, I represent the City of Calistoga on the UVA, which is the Upper Valley Authority, which oversees the Waste Management and Landfill Company, and we basically look out for the ratepayers. And I know prior to the fire situation, the number one headache or challenge has been, what do we do with all of our recycled materials? We've done an amazing job as a state, and more so as a county, and specifically Calistoga. We've become very, very good at that recycling. The irony of the situation is, we may face a day where that, all of that recycling may end up in the landfill because there's nowhere for that to go. And I know these guys have been working very hard, and Kristi's known throughout the industry in California as trying to help solve these problems. So we appreciate that effort. But what we're not seeing tonight is stop recycling.
Really, what I want to make up, do not stop recycling. And this is a blip in the market, and the only thing we have asked you to stop recycling are your plastic bags, and that's it. Nothing else. And actually, all of your glass bottles are still going to glass manufacturing. All of your paper products are being processed, all of your other plastics, like your water bottles and your detergent bottles. It's really the lower grade plastics that are not moving, which we're holding on to, and the plastic bags will be headed to the landfill. So that's one item we are not going to worry about anymore because it's done for now. But other than that, the rest of the materials, we're going as normal. We just want you to stop putting shoes and clothes and styrofoam and dirty stuff in there. Okay?
Thank you. Any council members, any questions regarding recycling, and then we'll move on to the fire situation?
Yeah, I have one question for the gentleman that spoke first. You had mentioned that you're going to be building retention ponds up there for additional water storage. Is it possible or even economically feasible that you could partner with the City of Calistoga? We have a lot of extra tertiary treated water that we don't know what to do with. Can we get it up there and help you? And you could help us.
I think that would be a great thing to look at. A really good look at.
Yeah, that's a big pipe.
We have a water shortage.
Yeah, it's a big pipe and a long way, but it's a solution, maybe.
I think it's something to look at.
Thank you.
It's really expensive, too, so thank you.
Yeah.
Any other council members with questions of either? And then I'll open it to any quick questions or clarifications the public may have.
I have probably more of a statement rather than a question, but a couple of questions. Naturally, this community gets very on edge when we see a column of smoke and multiple aircraft orbiting the hills, whether it's the landfill or not. So when that happens, my neighbors get ahold of me and ask me what's going on. And the problem, as I see it is, is that it's more than just two or three fires up there. There's a history, I believe, of what, 13, 15 fires over the last several years. So this is something that is extremely serious. In a high wind situation, the chances of that fire spreading out of the landfill are high. You have times when, we had the Mendocino Complex fire going. They diverted three or four aircraft down here that might have been able to be used to save someone's home up there. There is a use of city resources, of sending our water tender up there and firefighters up there to help suppress the fire. There's just a whole bunch of, and I'm sure you've heard this whole story before. So I'm glad to hear of the steps that you're taking as far as water supply is concerned and posting a fire watch, but that doesn't actually prevent the fire from occurring in the first place. So I think that's really one of the emphasis that needs to be up there. The other thing is, is on your fire watches, is there a procedure that has been approved by Cal Fire as to what training someone needs to have to be on the fire watch? What equipment they might need to have? I mean, obviously, they want them to have a telephone or something to report a fire. But is there a set of guidelines for that person who's on the fire watch to let him know what his job is expected to be?
Let me take the first part. You're absolutely correct that, obviously, we diverted resources, which we don't want to do. Fires in landfills happen. It's a nature of the beast, you might say. But we had a situation up there where that fire did start in something that came to our site, and it spread from that isolated area in the trash to areas on our landfill but were covered in a material that could ignite. And that was the first step we took, was no longer have that available. So, and then the second step we took was no longer using a material to cover the waste every night that also could ignite. So we believe both those steps greatly mitigate if something comes in that's warm or hot that may go into a fire situation. But I agree with you that we don't want to have any more fires. The second thing about training, so we are required by Cal Fire to put together a fire prevention, I'm not sure of the word's prevention, but a fire control and mitigation plan, a response plan. And that has to be in by, I think it's September 6th or 7th. And part of that will have that component to it. They've actually outlined that and said we need to do that. Before then, our people that we do have up there, they have phone trees to call out to people to ask for more help. They have training on our water truck that is up there and things like that. We were fortunate that during this last fire that we had a contractor onsite doing some work for us, and that greatly helped us. And we recognize that, that that's not going to be something that's always happening. So in the future, we need to have a much smaller footprint that is flammable, a more water, so when something does happen, something can be done about it right away. I spent quite a bit of time, as you pointed out, I think 13 in three years. I was probably at every one of those. Certainly, the last three, I spent quite a bit of time with several Cal Fire Battalion chiefs, watching them fight the fire and talking about how we could help and what type of response they needed from us. We've taken some steps to help them, but that's the whole point of the plan, is to get more help for them. We did put in a, I guess I'd call it a fire break slash fire road all the way around our site recently without these things happening. We saw that need. But I agree with you that in a high wind situation, bad things can happen.
And you don't want to be here in front of us again.
And I don't want to be here. It's been told to me that if you have another fire within this fire season, whether we start it or not, whether somebody else starts it or not, that there's going to be a whole host of secondary issues that would be very bad for us as a company and for the community because that resource may not be available.
Okay, thank you.
The morning after the fire, I spoke directly with Bryce and with Kristi, and in no uncertain terms, they were aware of the impact that had on the City of Calistoga when the phones blow up and light up because of what's happening so close to us. And then there was an emergency meeting called the week after the fire by the Upper Valley Authority, and I can assure you that in no uncertain terms, from ownership all the way through Bryce and Kristi here, it was made abundantly clear what the expectations are and what the disappointment was, and that was from Cal Fire all the way through our own fire services and from the representatives. They have acted and reacted very quickly and very well. The other thing that the UVA board made very clear is this is their situation. The corrective actions will be expensive, and the UVA at a future meeting will make it ensure that these are not ratepayer burdens. They are not ratepayer burdens. It is a privately held company, and we will have those discussions as we move forward. But their quick action is appreciated, and I know they take it very seriously. Does anyone have any questions on anything that came to this? Yes, sir. If you could just stand up, if it's a short question, this is not a three-minute situation. This is a quick question for clarification.
I certainly appreciate your interest. I think we can all just hear this. I have a question. Kristi, in terms of the plastics recycling that's being sent overseas and so it becomes a secondary plastic, the plastic that you can't recycle here, what does it take to get here as a relief of course? I'm starting to be...
I think in California, we have such strong emission standards that it's a facility not admitting or being a closed-loop facility. Like in Turlock, there's a burn plant, and they'll take this material, but you've got to get it to Turlock. They'll burn it in a clean burn plant and make electricity out of it. But by the time we all try to get this stuff to Turlock, it doesn't, that doesn't make sense. But I have been told that there is some plastic manufacturing plant that is looking at going into Nevada, so we may get some relief sooner. And also, if we can clean it all up and some of these other markets. But the real goal, I think, is, one, the manufacturers need to start taking back a percent of post-consumer materials, just like the PET bottles, just like the wine glass, just like the aluminum cans. There's a percent of those materials that are all being made into new products out of old products. And so we need to pressure the packaging company. It's called consumer product stewardship. And so it's a combination of factories in the United States and more of the manufacturers using, not using virgin material, but using recycled content.
Yes, in the back, please.
Quick, easy question. How do we recycle wine corks? It's a local question.
There's a wine cork drop box at the Welcome Center. Yeah, and it goes out to, there's a giant cardboard box that has the cork symbol on it, and there's a company that come and takes them, and they use them for cork boards, furniture, a whole host of materials. And I won't tell you how quickly this very large box gets filled up by Calistogans, so we'll just leave it at that.
If they are true cork and not plastic cork, they can actually go in your green waste bin?
Okay, but now we're phasing out?
We're not phasing out the green waste. We're just not processing it at Clover Flat right at the moment until the water system and our fire program is all installed. So eventually, we will go back to processing those products there, but not at this time. So we are processing those materials at our Whitehall Lane location, and they will get incorporated with the Grape Pumice Program, which is about to get started as harvest is getting started. And then we also have other outlets in Zamora, and we have, we actually have another composting operation in Lake County next to the Lake County landfill, which is a county-run landfill. But we do have a fairly good-sized composting operation up there, so there's not a problem with processing that.
Am I asking that? Is it going home?
No, not.
All right.
But you can.
Thank you guys very much, Kristi and Bryce. I appreciate your time, and thank you for being with us. All right, moving on to the consent calendar. It's in a motion to adopt the consent calendar as presented unless an item needs to be pulled.
Slow move.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kraus. We have a second by Councilmember Lopez Ortega. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to item I-5, Public Hearing. Consideration of an Appeal Received from Jeffrey Stambor of the Planning Commission's Approval of Design Review Application 2018-4. The recommended action this evening is to adopt the resolution. Taking us to this item will be our own Director Goldberg. Director Goldberg, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Actually, I'm going to change the recommendation right off the bat. We received some information, and it was brought to our attention on Friday after the packet was distributed, that the required open space requirement, the required open space for two of the four units in the project do not comply with one of the nine open space criteria in the zoning code, and therefore, staff is going to be recommending that the project be referred back to the Planning Commission as allowed by the municipal code to correct this inconsistency. So we are still recommending that the appeal be denied, but that the project also be referred back to the Planning Commission. So you will not be adopting this specific resolution, which specifically approves the project, because we need to correct that minor inconsistency with the zoning code.
Okay.
And there's a way to achieve that, so it's not going to be a major redesign of the project. But that was a late-breaking twist after the packet was distributed.
All right, thank you.
So I'll just give you a brief overview. On July 11th, the Planning Commission approved a design review application for a four-unit multifamily building and site improvements at the northeast corner of Washington Street and Fourth Street. And the attached Planning Commission Staff Report provides details of the project and an analysis of its consistency with the Calistoga General Plan, the zoning code, and multifamily residential guidelines. An excerpt from that meeting, those meeting minutes, is also attached to show what kind of public comments were given and the discussion that occurred amongst the commissioners. Subsequently, Jeffrey Stambor, an adjoining property owner, filed an appeal of the Commission's decision and requests that the City Council overturn its action. Mr. Stambor further requests that the Council direct the applicant to develop plans that better reflect the character of the neighborhood. I would just like to respond to a few of the issues raised in his appeal letter. The public notice was given in accordance with the Calistoga Municipal Code. It was mailed to property owners within 300 feet and also published in the newspaper. The project does comply with the general plan's high-density residential designation, and it's consistent with the housing element, which calls for making effective use of residential development sites. The project renderings presented at the Planning Commission were intended to clearly depict the proposed designs of all sites of the project. So the fact that Mr. Stambor's home was not depicted in the renderings was a conscious decision because it would have obscured the actual view of how the project would look, and that was the point of showing those to the Planning Commission. The issue of the project driveway's potential impacts on the three oak trees located along the common property line was raised by Mr. Stambor with staff after the Commission's public hearing. And in response, the applicants have agreed to imp... the applicants have agreed to implement reasonable measures recommended by the project arborist to ensure that these trees are preserved in the long term. The project design does meet the zoning code standard for minimum onsite parking. And I'd just like to clarify also that the project's site has been zoned for multifamily development since at least 1963, as have all the properties on the blocks bounded by Fairway, Second Street, Washington Street, and Fourth Street. And this was done to encourage additional residential development in proximity to the downtown. Based on some of the written correspondence that was also received apart from the appeal, there's some general confusion about what kind of development is allowed in the R3 zoning districts, so I just wanted to hit on that for a minute. The zoning code was amended in 2014 to realign the permitted and conditionally permitted uses allowed in residential zoning districts with the 2003 general plan. And as part of these adjustments, single-family dwellings were eliminated as a permitted use in the R3 zoning district because the general plan's high-density residential land use designation that applies to this district only allows multifamily housing. So, between 2003, when the general plan, high-density residential designation was adopted, that it limits development within the high-density residential classification to multifamily dwellings, and 2014, single-family dwellings were allowed. And in fact, at least one was constructed on the particular block of Fourth Street in the vicinity of the project. But subsequent to 2014, single-family dwellings and duplexes are no longer allowed in the R3 district. And this is, in fact, to encourage the development of multifamily dwellings and make the use of the property that's most consistent with the goals of the general plan. It is possible to replace a single-family dwelling if it's voluntarily taken down by the property owner, if they move along in a timely manner, such as the one that was recently demolished next to the Francis House. They are reconstructing that, and they will be submitting building permit and design review and building permit applications for that soon. However, once a certain period of time has lapsed, if a single-family dwelling is taken down and the property is vacant, then anything that is developed on that property has to be in conformance with the zoning code, which is basically for multifamily dwellings. There's also a question raised in subsequent correspondence about where the front yard is on the property in terms of determining setbacks. As allowed by the municipal code, the Planning and Building Director is allowed, under certain circumstances, to make that determination. In this case, the property is not only a corner lot, but it's an irregularly-shaped parcel. And the determination was made that the property's front yard is adjacent to Fourth Street. During the Planning Commission's public hearing, it became evident that the project architect or the plans had an error in labeling the project's front yard on the site plan as an interior side yard, which it clearly is not because it's adjacent to Fourth Street. And so, the plans you have, the large-scale plans you have tonight, have the correction of that error, but that's the only change that has been made between the plans that were reviewed by Planning Commission and the ones before you tonight. There's also a question of the lot in question not meeting the minimum lot area standards, and in the R3 zoning district, that's a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. That standard basically applies only if a property is being subdivided. So, if somebody has a larger parcel and wishes to subdivide it in the R3 zoning district, we would require a 10,000-square-foot minimum lot. This one is somewhat smaller than 10,000 square feet, but that does not mean that it cannot be developed. It simply means that the number of units that can be entitled on that property is a function of how many units are allowed by the general plan. So, the general plan and the high-density residential classification allows up to 20 units per acre, and the four units that were approved on the site are the maximum that are allowed based on that lot area. So, there was no density bonus given, there were no incentives or concessions, as we have done for affordable housing and some of the other projects. There is also a question of the lack of bicycle, formal bicycle parking. Under the zoning code in multifamily, one bicycle parking, one dedicated bicycle parking space would have been required for this project. It was felt that since each of the units are going to have an enclosed fence front yard, that it would be amply sized to accommodate bicycles, that there wasn't any benefit to having one secured bicycle parking space in addition to that, and that it was, in fact, accomplished on every, for every unit in its front yard. Also, there's a question of whether parking can be allowed in rear yards, and I've cited the code, the municipal code, that allows parking lots to be located in rear yards. Finally, or just two more things, there was a question of whether there should be onsite management of the project, and the Planning Commission specifically did not find that that was necessary, given the small number of proposed units, that is, four units. Something else that came up today by a member of public was the concern that the property is located within a flood area, and we did confirm that it is outside of the floodway that's controlled by the municipal code. And that's also shown on the civil plans for the project. So, as I mentioned, we do feel that the Planning Commission did act appropriately in approving the project with the information that it had at the time. But since it was brought to light subsequently, that we need to correct the location of the open space for two of the units, that we are requesting that you refer it back to the Planning Commission, which is one of the options that's allowed by the municipal code, and at the same time, deny the appeal because of the inadequate basis for the appeal, basically. So, we would be taking it back to Planning Commission, having them do a minor modification and re-adopt the design review entitlement. Happy to answer. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Director Goldberg. First off, are there any declarations or disclosures? I'll start. I did meet with the appellant, as well as one of their neighbors, and I did meet with a member of the Planning Commission to get some background from their perspective as well. Otherwise, I have not met with the applicant. Any other disclosures or declarations?
I have met with the same two people, the appellant and one member of the Planning Commission.
I also met with the appellant, and I have not met with anybody from the Planning Commission or the applicant, so.
I did met also with the appellant and one of the neighbors.
Same. All right, thank you very much. With that stated, council members, any questions before we welcome the appellant and/or the public? Please.
Okay. The driveway, is that on the property line? You said that an arborist would be involved to come up with a recommendation to protect the trees, but is the concrete, the driveway, on the property line or inside?
The driveway and the parking lot does, is proposed to run up to the property line itself. We met on the site with the project arborist, and he said that once we had the final plans, the final grading and infrastructure plans for the project at the building permit stage, that he could work with us to design appropriate paving within the drip lines of those trees and other measures to avoid trenching of the roots and that kind of thing. So, that was an issue that was raised after the Planning Commission public hearing, so there is not a specific condition of approval, but there is a letter attached in your packet indicating that the applicant is willing to work with the arborist to implement reasonable preservation measures. And that is commonly done. It is possible to achieve. So, we would be following through at the building permit stage on that.
Okay. What are the parking minimums?
It's two units, excuse me, two spaces per unit.
Okay.
Regardless of size.
Has, excuse me, has two units per unit been adequate?
Two spaces per unit.
For other projects that have been in town? I know the senior housing, we approve less parking spaces, but with La Padera, there's been some problems with parking, and we've got the new workforce housing that's right next to La Padera. I forget the name of it, but I don't know.
Calisades apartments.
I don't remember how many parking spaces are per car there, and if we have any issues there.
I believe those were both affordable projects, so I don't, and I wasn't involved in them, so I don't know off the top of my head of two spaces per unit.
That was back when Solage went in, they financed a lot of that.
Family apartments did not ask for a parking reduction, and I'm not aware of any problem with the recently, fairly recently constructed project at the end of Washington Street.
Are they two cars per?
Yeah, as far as I know, as far as I recall, they did not ask for a parking reduction.
Okay. Back to the parking. So, as I look at this, the eighth parking space, you're on it, you're not able to pull out, I think they call it, like a K or something, where you can pull in and back out without running into the fence? Is there, has that been resolved?
Actually, yes, we are working on a plan that would address both the open space, and it would shorten the building to allow some space adjacent to that space, space between the fence and the space to allow for that. But that's not before you, tonight, that's not reflected in your plan tonight. But since that was brought to our attention as well, we're going to address it when it goes back to Planning Commission.
Okay.
So, that would, in effect, be pulling that final car further from the property line?
Further from the, right, from the property line and fence.
Thank you.
So, that makes two things that are going to go back to the Planning Commission, open space and parking.
We're trying to address as many of the concerns that have been raised as possible, so we thought it would be appropriate to try to take that one in as well.
Couple more. Fencing, on the plan, it looks like the fencing is six feet. It doesn't, the fencing can't be more than four feet, is that correct?
Four and a half feet, right.
Four and a half.
Yes. And the applicant is aware of that, and we would pick that up at the building permit stage.
Four and a half feet in the front yard?
Yes, in the front yard. Six feet.
Rear inside yards, six, with up to a variance if you.
And then, there's a notch out at the corner for the vision triangle, so that you can see cars coming on Washington Street.
That corner's been modified to allow for that, that vision?
It already has, yeah. It is, it's shown that way.
On the plan, it shows it as a?
It's pulled, it's angled back.
I mean, has it been modified from the?
It has been modified.
They gave me the big copy, because I don't like, I wear my glasses.
So, what's shown on this plan meets the requirements for the vision issue?
At the corner?
The fence at the corner?
Yeah.
No, that'll have to be pulled back. But on the rendering, it's shown in its, in its modified form, it's angled from the back.
Okay. I guess, lastly, requiring bicycles to be parked or stored in a front yard, to me, sort of invites clutter. And I'm just, is there an opportunity for that storage to be in the backyard?
Absolutely. If they choose to store them in the rear yard, they could do that. Some of them, I'm not going to get into the project redesign, but we're also addressing that, so that they'll have gates to the rear yard. But there will be a screening fence of four and a half feet high in that front yard, so.
It seems to me, if you have kids in there, they're going to leave their bikes in the front yard instead of a formal bike parking lot in the back. If I were a kid, that's what I'd do.
Well, they could fight over the one dedicated park, bicycle parking space.
One last question. The fencing in the renderings is sort of transparent. You can see through it? Is that, I would have an issue with that if we were, if they're storing garbage cans, which are blue, green-colored, in the very, next to the sidewalk, if the fence was transparent, you're looking at garbage bins. Can that be a?
There's a recommendation we can make back to the Planning Commission.
Sure.
Are these renderings the pictures that the architect drew? Is this kind of reminiscent of a problem we faced about a year, year and a half ago on the building next to Pacifico Restaurant, where the renderings didn't look like what actually was put there? And I thought we had developed language and a way to say that the renderings should look like what is going to go there. Some of these pictures that we have in here don't look anything like what is there now, what could be there. Although.
What is there now?
There's, well, there's one with a great green grass expanse where Mr. Stambor's house is.
Yes, that's what I was explaining in my presentation, that the purpose of those renderings was to show the Planning Commission what the side of the building looked like.
Okay.
It was not supposed to be a simulate, a visual simulation of what the streetscape would be. Doesn't really matter if there's a house in front of it or not, but it's definitely not a park-like setting, and that was recognized.
I did have a conversation with Mr. Stambor about that, and he recognized that. But didn't we do some language in our general plan or something about representations looking like what it's actually going to be? Remember that, Gary? Because I think you were the one, and you were too, Michael, because it was right close to your establishment, about how it looks on plans.
Well, we did not do a general plan amendment subsequent to that.
I thought we did something, but.
Yeah. Again, the intention was to show the Planning Commission what the side of the building was going to look like, not necessarily what it was going to look like in C2.
Any other questions?
No.
So, what we are welcome to do as a council is, should we so choose to send this back to the Planning Commission? We are obviously entitled and welcome to make suggestions. I would agree with the Planning Director, we are not here to design the project, so let's be clear about that. But we can, based upon concerns we witness or concerns raised to us, make recommendations on modifications for the Planning Commission to consider at their public hearing for this project. The plans we have in front of us are what was seen by the Planning Commission. It is my understanding that the applicant, not the appellant, but the applicant, has suggested that they are open to making some modifications, specifically around the open space element, which will impact or could potentially impact the number of bedrooms, as well as the rear parking. So, one of the, and I see, I know you're taking notes, but one of the strong recommendations I will make is that in modifying the building and modifying the parking, that we move that final car off of the property line, which you've heard, and then also accommodating for the oak trees, giving some distance, allowable distance between that property line as well. Okay? Anything else?
I'll have comments after I've listened to what the public has to say.
All right. So, I will have the appellant come up with the understanding, just so everyone's aware of what's the recommendation being made here. The recommendation for this council to consider is for this to go back to, or amend it back to the Planning Commission with some recommendations for the Planning Commission and the applicant and public to, yes, please.
And to deny the appeal.
And to deny the appeal. Okay?
Aren't those two things mutually exclusive?
No, no.
Well, how can we send it back in a denial state?
Because.
Why can't we just send it back and let them redo it, and then hear?
Because what we have in.
The basis for the appeal is not centered around the inconsistency on the open space of those two units. That was not the basis for the appeal. That's something that was raised subsequent to the appeal being filed, in fact, much later than the appeal being filed. So, we cannot allow a project to move forward that's inconsistent with the zoning code. And so, if it had been brought to our attention, whether it had been appealed or not, we would be correcting that. So, before you is the basis of Mr. Stambor's appeals letter of public notice, density, renderings, parking, and, you know, it's inappropriate for the neighborhood, the single-family neighborhood. That's the basis for the appeal. That's not going to change, regardless of whether the garbage. whether the, the garbage cans are screened or whether there's sufficient parking space.
Okay, so the basis for the appeal is what is outlined in the second paragraph of his appeal letter.
It's.
Page two, page nine of our.
Six items in that paragraph are all that we can, that all that we should consider for that appeal?
Well, that's.
Not, not the rest of the verbiage?
No, you can, you can consider all of Mr. Stambor's appeal letter, but I was just responding to the six that he had highlighted at the beginning of his, of his letter.
Those six items in the paragraph.
Right.
States our opposition is based on, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Right, but he goes on to include some things that are not listed on there.
And some of which we will be talking about or remanding back to planning commission. So again, we're remanding back something that is in the state of denial, and I don't feel comfortable with that.
City manager, Feek.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of comments. So first of all, the, the language, the language in the municipal code, which outlines how appeals are addressed by city council. The city council, when you, when, when anyone makes an appeal of a decision made by a city staff person, by a planning commission, it's referred to the city council. It must be heard within a certain number of days, but when the council has that appeal in front of you, you make certain decisions or actions. So you either appeal, you uphold an appeal, you deny an appeal, or you can take other matters as you believe necessary. One of those other matters you can do in ball is also refer it back to staff, like we did in the last appeal we saw. You can also refer it back to the body which made the decision, so in this case, the planning commission. When the city council refers something back to the body which makes the decisions, many cities have several bodies which are representative, this, our city attorney recommends that you deny the appeal. Deny it, so you put a stamp on it that says denied, and it's been referred back. These items be brought up in another public meeting at the planning commission, where then an item will be considered. City attorney also advised, who's not here today, we did not invite the city attorney, didn't feel there was a need to, also advised that the city council can provide comment feedback to that planning commission making their decision, so you can offer comments, discussion based on, you know, any public comment here tonight, also some of the comments that we've had here. From the city's perspective, when we receive an appeal, we're directed to respond to the appeal. And, you know, fortunately, unfortunately, you know, a lot of emails from residents, concerns, things coming in, it was, there was an informal discussion with a neighbor who spoke to one of our elected officials who brought an item to our attention. It wasn't discussed at the planning commission, at the staff level, the planning commission level, by a resident or by the applicant, which involved the open space issue. And when it was brought to our attention on Thursday afternoon, after the agenda's published, hey, this is an issue. So now we're working over the weekend to understand what it is and why, what seems like it's kind of a change of pace in front of everyone tonight. So from the item before the council, we've provided notice to the public, we've announced that there is a public hearing, and recommend we allow for the public to weigh in at a public hearing. And as Liz Lynn said before you, the action tonight, so it's just clear and easy, is you deny the appeal, and you refer this item back to the planning commission for reconsideration with any items you wish to refer back to them to consider.
And then, and then they could appeal it again, whatever that decision is.
Whatever that planning commission decision is will be what it is, independent and irrespective of this item before you. And technically, yes, an applicant could appeal that decision too.
But what it does allow in the, in the planning commission element is another public hearing for the applicant and the public to weigh in to the planning commission on, because it, the application is now opened back up, because there is a modification that has to occur as a result of the open space element, and we would strongly recommend to the applicant to consider the concerns and suggestions made by anyone during the public hearing.
Dylan, you used the term technically can re-appeal. I don't like that term, technically, that, that to me is legal mumbo jumbo.
Yes, they may appeal.
They may appeal, thank you. So just to make, allay my fears, and I think some fears of people out in the audience, if we deny the appeal tonight and we remand it back to the planning commission, the planning commission makes changes to the plan, along with the applicant agreeing to these changes, it comes back here with a recommendation to pass that. Appealer can appeal again if they are not satisfied with what was done.
What's the cost of an applicant appealing?
Excuse me?
What does it cost?
Two hundred dollars.
A hundred dollars, so if.
Two hundred, two hundred dollars.
The appellant in this case decides that a new determination by the planning commission does not meet their needs, that we're going to charge them a hundred dollars again.
Two.
Two hundred.
Two hundred.
Two hundred. We don't give two for one, or?
Two, two hundred barely covers our, you know, putting it in the paper.
Well, the appeal will then be based on a new set of circumstances.
Here, before.
Yeah, I know we're getting into technicalities and stuff.
No, I mean, no.
But I want to make sure everybody understands what we're doing, how we're doing it, and what each body's rights are.
Yep.
The appellant and the applicant.
By remanding, by this body remanding this back to the planning commission, this is not an approved and buildable project. The planning commission has to go back and modify, make modifications with the applicant so that it meets the standard, in this case, it's the open space standard, unless that body chooses to waive that, and then it would come back to us. I don't believe that to be the case, so.
Okay.
That's why we're going to, in no personal offense, deny the appeal, should we so decide, and then the whole thing goes back to the planning commission, so that these modifications to meet what our code is, and as Lyndon mentioned, that was brought to the attention at a late hour, which actually works to a benefit, because it sends it back to the planning commission for everyone to chat this out. Okay?
Well, I'm sure the appellant will have something to say when they get up there.
Absolutely, absolutely. I just wanted to make sure everyone's aware.
We'll, we'll get all the opinions very quickly.
So we will have the appellant come in first. Who is representing the appellant? Donna? All right. Everyone after the appellant will have three minutes maximum.
Can you clarify one more thing for me?
Please.
If the open space issue is going to go back to the planning, is that the only issue? Or can they revisit the plans and find other issues and correct them?
They can correct any issue that is out of compliance with what our code is, and that is also an excellent opportunity for another hearing to, or an opportunity to speak to the planning commission, for the applicant and the public to address some of the other concerns. Understanding that some of the concerns that were raised in this letter, that being it is R3 clearly.
Clearly.
Four units is allowed, clearly, in the R3 district, and all of the other elements that went there. What I think you're going to find is the only way to achieve the open space option is going to be through the modification to the building, which will more than likely result in some of the concerns, addressing some of the concerns that you folks have.
So we.
And you will be able to address that with the planning commission in a public hearing.
Okay, so we can, it'll be open again, and if you deny the appeal tonight, Mr. Stambor and myself will have to submit another appeal and pay another two hundred dollars.
You only have to submit another appeal if at the end of that public hearing and back and forth with the planning commission.
Right.
It still meet, you're still not satisfied.
Okay.
But please understand what the planning director said is, some of what was appealed are not grounds for this body to consider the appeal. So you, this is a, I, we've seen this before, this is a good catch and a good opportunity for the whole thing to go back.
Okay, well, I'm going to pretend that I, I, I'm not going to pretend, but I, I'm trying to grasp what you're saying. My name is Donna Higgins, and I live on Fourth Street. And at the July 11th meeting, we had 10 days to submit an appeal. So we had to educate ourselves very rapidly at looking at blueprints and reading city codes. We had 10 days, so Jeffrey's letter has 10 days of work. Now we have from July 11th to today, we have more than 30 days of work. So we've seen more things come to light. So it might be in our advantage, can bring up more things at the next planning. So on the minimum plot area that we're talking about, I've given you, if you want to, instead of saying, citing every Calistoga Code number, blah, blah, blah. In the municipal code, in the R3, R3 proposed, under minimum development standards, the following standards apply within R3. Corner lots equal 10,000 square feet. I read it here, you read it here, and then I said, well, can you show me on your line 71 through 73, where this, where the words add the standard only applies if property is subdivided? Show me the municipal code or their aside. I can't find it. Lynn sent me back to the same thing we're reading here, 1019.040. It does not mention the word subdivision of property. I would like to read it so that I'm, I'm educated, so I don't sound like, well, you can't keep referring back to that, Donna, it doesn't make any, you know, you have to throw that out now, because I would like to see the Calistoga Municipal Code number that we.
Okay.
And then on the next page, it says the minimum width of a lot shall be 100 square feet. And if you, I have a parcel map, he comes in at 600, I mean, the corner lot shall be 100 feet, this shows 659 feet. So does that fall under this subdivision that I can't identify? Okay?
Okay.
Okay. He also, you also spoke, Kathy, if you could put that up really quick, or you want me to? Okay, let's, let's just take a walk around the building, okay? On July 11th, there was no front yard designation at the planning commission meeting, okay? So where, we go home and we, you know, it gets approved, and we go, well, where's the front yard? Can't figure out where the front yard. Say they're going to enter Fourth Street, but there's no, there's no marking, okay? So we walk away and we say, this is a, this lack of showing is a, we need a fundamental understanding of where, to determine yard setbacks. Front yards and side yards are different, so it's confusing. We're starting to ask questions now, what's the front, what's the side, what's the back? So then we get a new plan, and you'll see that Fourth Street is the front, Washington is, I believe says yard, Stambor's side, inner yard, rear, there's no yard designation. I'm sorry, I have to walk up here. There's no yard again on this plan that says what that's, what is that? Is it an interior yard? Is it a, what is there, be front, I don't know how to work this thing. This thing here? So there's no, there's no designation on what that is. Bingo, nothing. I don't know if it's an interior yard, I don't know how I was going to name it. Okay, so we can't talk about that unless it has proper identification, because I'm only going when I, when I understand, Mr. Stambor's side has a 12 interior yard setback that can be used as a driveway. It can drive cars over a setback. In the municipal code, I know I'm jumping around, but under parking design, section, you know, 1730 dash seven, unless otherwise provided, required parking and loading spaces shall not be located in any yard required by this title. So the, at last parking place up there is in the rear yard setback. And now if we identify, I know, if we identify the unmarked line as an interior side yard, it has to be set back 12 feet because of the height of the building, one half the height of the building. Those parking places have to be moved back. Okay?
Okay.
This is a problem, okay? These are things that are going to come up, and then you, he can address all these at the next meeting, but a minimum parking space is located within private structures such as a garage or carport. You can see there's parking spaces that are going to go under that carport, and that a Calistoga Municipal Code say they have to be 10 feet wide. Those now on your blueprints are eight feet wide. You have to provide eight spaces, and I'm not going to do the math, but, and you're allowed to have 33% of your parking into compact cars. He took 38% in the original drawing. Okay, now, bicycle parking calls for one parking space provided for every three dwellings. The code is very descriptive as to the location and requirements of this said spot. There is nothing in the builder's plan for such bicycle parking, nor mention of omission of this requirement. It's a city code. No variance was applied for. Line 76 through 78 does not call for a variance in this requirement, but suggests bikes be parked in front yards of every apartment. They can take their bikes upstairs. This is not the issue. The issue is not where individuals choose to park their bikes, but rather that the Calistoga Municipal Code was not addressed or a variance applied for. Can't dismiss that. If I want to build something, you're not going to come to my house and say, it's okay, well, you know, you can do that. You have to address these issues, and they have to be looked at, and either a variance applied for or some language put in to the standards. And then, okay, Kathy, do I just go forward one with this thing? That we talked about, you brought it up, about the fencing that has to be dropped on the front street, it has to be lowered to two and a half feet on the corner for visibility, this is a high-traveled area, children are coming in the morning, children are going in the afternoon, this is a high travel, so I want visibility, they need visibility, bikes need visibility. That has to be put in the plan, and we have to be able to see it. Can't imagine that it's there, we should be able to see that it's there. So I think that's an issue, and, and the other issue is this one, getting down to that last parking place, I don't see how it's possible, because the last parking place, go back, is bordered now by three fences, Stambor's side, Presbyterian's side, Washington Street Home's side. So it's going to be difficult to get out there, but I think that it will be moved from what we're talking about right now. Okay, so we talked about the yards, we haven't really discussed the fronts of these properties. Uncovered porches or stairways, or fire escapes or landings may extend to the front yard or required yard, not to exceed six feet. It appears in these drawings that they go upstairs, up three stairs, don't know if that's a patio, uncovered porch. In the landscaping designs, it shows there's a perimeter of, of some green in there. So those areas are not allowed to extend three feet into the front yard. The municipal code there, you can see that. We talked about the fencing in the corner, and we talked about the parking lot design. It's interesting that it's called a one-way driveway, that that means it's obviously one way in and one way out, it's not really one way only. I mean, description should have been multiple use, or, you know, because two cars obviously can't pass each other, it's 12 feet wide, I measured, okay? And I think it's just interesting, because I had the minimum development standards that I, I don't know if this is what they're addressing at the planning, 17.9.040. It says a minimum square feet, 300 square feet per unit of usable open space shall be Unit number A has the front yard only, and it has no back yard, okay? So it, it also says in the code that you cannot take the square footage in the front yards and apply them to this minimal development standards. So overall, but we need, you know, there's 300 times four unit, you need 1,200 of open space. And we don't talk about public open space, or if there are children, or if they would have any area to play in. Last but not least, I'm skipping over a lot of stuff, but is the garbage bin placement? In, in the projected plans, and I know they're not permanent plans, it shows the bins on the sidewalk, and maybe they're behind the fence, it, there's multiple level fences on the, on the renderings, I'm not quite sure where they are, but I don't think you want to have 12 bins next five feet away on a public walkway on a street there. I think that it could cause problems with odor, and in your guidelines, multiple family gardens on trash N1, trash enclosures should be located in non-conspicious areas, well-screened and landscaping, and designed so as to protect adjacent uses from noise and odors. I, I wouldn't say that that, that's, I think it's too close to where we're going to walk. And I, the overall feeling is that the project is too large to fit on this square footage, so every kind of little angle that could be cut was cut. And obviously, the open space has a problem right, right up front. And so I think when it goes back, I'd say that there could be a better alternative that could fit here, you could put a triplex here and not have this difficulty. And it would fit, you know, it might fit the neighborhood, we know we need housing, it's a given, and so that, that's why we're appealing this, that we think the project is too. that we think the project is too large. Not that the, not that we don't need housing. We do need housing. We want it to be in our neighborhood, and we want to welcome it, we don't want to, you know, walk by everything, and not welcome it, is what I'm trying to say. So.
Okay.
Any, I don't know if you can ask me questions, but.
Council members, any questions of the appellant? Okay.
At this point.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, at this time, I'll open it up to public comment. I do have three speaker cards that I will start with, and then anyone wishing to address the council after that is welcome to do so. We will address, it's far more efficient if you've been to these meetings before, if you do have questions to ask during your three minutes, ask the question, and we'll address it afterward. Otherwise, it becomes a back-and-forth, and you consume your three minutes. All right? With that said, the first card I have is from Yvonne Henry. Yvonne, should you so choose, please share with us your name and the address, but you are not required to do so.
Yvonne Henry, thank you. I think it's great that these issues came up, and we can look at those details and clean them up. In looking at this, I did some research, and the research that I found is when the R3 zoning for Third Street was established, it was in the 1950s, okay? It was a different town in the 1950s. It could not have been anticipated in the 1950s that there would be such changes in population density, proximity of large apartment complexes, and increase in vehicular traffic, particularly wide-body vehicular traffic. Back then in Calistoga, a family of five had one car. Back then, there was enough parking to accommodate the needs of two churches and families that went to invite relatives for reunions. There was a lot of room. It is always within the power of the city council and the Planning Commission to interpret and appropriate usage based on the goals of the community. For this location, the proposal of an unknown number of bedrooms on this square-foot lot moves from residential infill to residential in folly. Thank you.
Just for clarification, while the original R3 was possibly established in the 50s, it was memorialized in 63, and then every single general plan amendment from 1963 forward, and every zoning review from 1963 forward overlooks the entire city and continues to approve those zoning elements. So it's not a case of, you know, it was just established in 63 or the 50s and never looked at again, so just as an FYI. And in terms of the unknown number of bedrooms, I do believe that on all of the plans, Lynn, there is a very clear distinction on how many bedrooms designated per unit, which gives you the total.
It does have on some of them two or three. Some of them can be used as offices and that kind of thing.
Okay. Thank you.
We don't regulate the number of bedrooms per unit.
Got it. Jeffrey Stanborn.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Jeffrey Stanborn, I live at 1406 Fourth Street, adjacent to the 1514 Washington. First of all, I want to state that I'm not opposed to multi-unit project, but I am opposed to the scale and density of the 13-bedroom project. My neighbor, I think, did a really good job of factually citing the municipal codes that this proposed project does not meet, and we really need to follow those for, in not setting any precedence going forward. But there's also the kind of the element of interpretation of how does the project fit into the existing neighborhood, and how does it affect the current residents in the community? And unfortunately, there isn't a municipal code for being a respectful neighbor. When I first noticed the change in ownership of the lot, I searched out the new owner and inquired about his plans. He told me he originally wanted to construct a single-family home, and that's the same thing that the nuns at the monastery had told me as well, but was told by the city that it wasn't allowed due to the zoning restrictions. The new direction was a multi-unit complex, so he agreed to share his plans and came to our house to show my wife and I the plans. We were surprised by the scale, but he promised that there would be a five-foot buffer between our lot and his driveway to accommodate some landscaping to buffer the in-and-out traffic. He also contacted me the next day to say that he was eliminating the furthermost window on the second floor of the four-bedroom unit to help with privacy, with my concern about looking right into my backyard. But when the plans were presented to the Planning Commission, one, there was no buffer, the driveway was right against the property line, and the window was still there. We talked about the oak trees, and yes, subsequently, they're being mitigated by the promise to adhere to Arborist report. But to me, it just shows a fundamental disregard for the effect of the project outside the narrow lines of the property limitations. It was suggested, requested by the Planning Commission on the July 11th meeting, that the new owners of the property meet with the neighbors to discuss the project and its impact on the neighborhood. But as of today, I'm the only one that has any contact with them, and it was only through my instigation. When I met with Joe Schneider, the Arborist, Lynn and Dimitri at the Washington Street property to discuss the oaks, Dimitri mentioned that he was going to have the property surveyed, and that hopefully the oak trees were on his side of the property line, so he could just cut them down.
You have three minutes, Mr. Stanborn. I'll give you 30 more seconds.
Okay, in a subsequent meeting with Dimitri, I tried to work out a compromise to allow some kind of buffer between the driveway and our house, but he was adamant that he wouldn't do anything, because that would mean reducing the square footage of the complex. We're not downtown San Francisco. We don't need building upon building construction. There's got to be a better alternative to the current project that provides the housing without such a negative effect on the neighborhood. And thank you for your attention and for the extra 30 seconds.
Thank you, sir. Noreen Moses, you are next.
Good evening. Good evening. I am Noreen Moses. I, I'm here because I feel this project is entirely too big for the site, and I just wonder, before I start, if we could have a show of hands for how many people are here tonight, because you agree that it is too large for where we are talking about. Thank you. And I find it interesting that Jeffrey mentioned downtown San Francisco, because just today, it came to me that I want to live on a street that looks like Calistoga, not like Lombard Street in San Francisco. So I find it interesting that Jeffrey came up with that. Each one of our council members has a copy of the remarks that I intended to make tonight, and the information given to us by our planning director has made me realize that the individual remarks no longer pertain because of this 2014 change. I was going to go down the south side of Fourth Street and describe how, since we have been there since 1980, every one of the lots on that side of Fourth Street has evolved into a single-family residence, and it is a street entirely of single-family residences now, except for the ruly apartments down on the fairway and forth. But there is, I have a question for what you said in the updated rules. And you said that a person can request to replace a single-family home with a single-family home, unless there has been too long a period of it being demolished, but you didn't give any time for what that time period is, that it can stay demolished and still request a single-family home to be built.
We'll address that right at the end of your three minutes, if there's other questions you have.
Thank you.
Just to give you some more time.
I was going, last night, I was looking through your multifamily residential design guidelines, and some things jumped out at me again. One, protect and promote Calistoga's rural, small-town character, which fits in with versus San Francisco. Protecting the unique and desirable qualities of established neighborhoods, and our neighborhood has become established as single-family, and I was going to say that I thought a duplex would be a fitting structure there, but now I understand you can't do a duplex. So I would say a request for another single-family residence replacement would be appropriate, rather than what is planned now.
I'm going to give you the same 30 seconds extra, and then that'll be.
Okay, the other is safeguard the privacy of neighboring properties. And then several pages back, providing for guest parking. It doesn't even have enough parking for residents. What's going to happen when everybody's home on a weekend, everybody has visitors, and the monastery is having a lovely religious ceremony with a lot of people attending? Where are they all going to park? The streets are full already. The project is just too big, no matter what it says on paper, for what can be done. The reason we have commissions and councils is to use our intellect and discretion for what really is appropriate for an individual site. And I thank you for your, all your work that you put in on this.
Thank you.
And I thank you for your consideration tonight.
Thank you very much. Director Goldberg, what is the time window from demolition to rebuild?
It's six months, but we also provide some flexibility if somebody is pursuing their entitlements and have filed a building permit, et cetera, if they're moving towards.
So if you've actively engaged within that six-month period?
Right. And as long as you keep it going, yeah, keep working on it.
But that's his choice, too, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So he clearly, at first, maybe he was thinking of single-family, but then he changed his mind.
I had not heard that, that's an anecdote, so I don't, I never heard that from, yeah.
Okay. I don't have any more speaker cards. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council? And the only thing I would make a request of is, if someone else prior to you has made your point, don't feel compelled to remake that point, but you are entitled to do so. Yes, sir, please share with us your name and your address, and keep it to three minutes.
I'll do my best.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, council members, and Lynn. I'm John Wack, W-A-C-K. I'm a physician, and I live right on the corner there, across from the monastery, at 1602 Washington Street. And I have, I've only, I'm a newcomer, I've only been here eight and a half years, but I've been to Calistoga for 30. I was a physician in San Francisco, and I came to Calistoga because I loved it. I thought about buying that lot many, many years ago, and I'm extremely pleased with it. I love the iconic monastery across the street, the people involved, the community, neighborhood, and I agree with everything that's been said before. R3 designation or not, this is inappropriate. It's, obviously, no one knew the R3 designation, seriously, so it's possible that that should really need to be re-looked. The neighborhood has changed. That has always been a small house, and now they're planning something quite different. I think that's inappropriate for what Calistoga is. We're losing kind of that, I will point out that obviously Lincoln Street is our busiest street. Washington Street, traffic has increased dramatically. I've noticed that over 30 years just visiting, and it certainly has increased dramatically in the last several bridge construction, yada, yada, but it's a different, that's a thorough way now. And tourists see this, it's part of the town. What kind of face do we want to give to our visitors? We're like Laguna Beach or something, you know? We need to present ourselves as a tourist place. Let's look at the scale of things. I made it under three minutes.
You did well, thank you. You can give your extra 30 seconds back to Jeff, so now you're even at three.
Good evening, my name is Dennis Lang, I reside at 1322 Cedar Street.
Welcome, Dennis.
Thank you. And one of the issues I had, just looking at this lot coverage, I just couldn't believe it, it's hugely covered, and I realized that it's no further from the Napa River than my home is on the other side of the river, and so I thought, gosh, I don't understand why the flood zone doesn't enter into this situation. So I had a conversation with Lynn today. I've been on the phone to Washington DC, to FEMA, who actually draws up the flood map, the flood map service, and so I've had them send to me, and I have copies of what they've sent. We put up maps and everything, and what I'm challenging is the Calistoga's municipal code of the zoning, at least the zoning for flood in that area. I happen to sit in what's called the AE flood zone, and so they draw beautiful colored maps, and they'll show you exactly where that is, and you can actually put your address down, and they will show you right where you're at. Well, I'm here to inform you, I didn't sign up a card, because I thought maybe somebody was going to speak to it, but I'm here to inform you that 1514 Washington happens to be in the AE flood zone, which has very strict guidelines on lot coverage. I know this because I wanted to build a garage on my lot and could not because of where we're located. And so I talked to Lynn about it today, and Lynn said, well, she'd do some more research on it, and I think just the municipal code here, doesn't the municipal code, isn't it based on FEMA's maps? And if it is, then this location cannot cover the lot as it is planned. And so I'll submit these, and Lynn and I have talked about it, and I know she's done some research. Yeah, yeah, she's.
His are in color, though.
Yeah, yeah. Anyhow, that's, I hope that we look into the zoning for the flood plain, because there's no way they can cover it with driveways and what they've covered the lot with right now if they are in an AE zone, which they truly are according to FEMA, not necessarily our municipal code, which I think is based on FEMA. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to?
Miss, let's not get started, you know how I feel about that. Just quickly, Lynn, from my own education, municipal code, flood plain, is that necessarily the FEMA overlay? I know there are many elements to that.
And I shared this link with Mr. Lang after he left the office. It is clearly shown, this is Napa County GIS, and it's based on the FEMA maps, and it clearly shows the lot outside of the zone AE. It is in the 500-year flood, which means it could flood at less than one foot, and the finished floor elevations are shown to be one and a half feet above. But it's not the same as the floodway, which Mr. Lang's property is located in.
In the floodway, right.
Floodway, yeah. I mean, it's not uniform, there's not a uniform setback of flooding along the river, so yes, he's on one side of the river, and this project's on the other side, and his house is, in fact, in the floodway. This one is not, and the civil drawings for the plans reflect that.
Okay, thank you.
I have drawn this.
It's, 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 well, we, there are different maps from FEMA, first off, but we will, we will make that a point that we will address directly with the Planning Commission. But having been down this road before, what you call up on the FEMA website is not what FEMA uses in your civil engineering and your designation from the county, and I only know that because of the interaction we've had with flood control, so. But absolutely, with that point made, that will be captured, and we can get an official designation from the person at FEMA, who tells you whether or not you are in or out of the flood plain, and at what level, 100-year, 500-year, et cetera, okay? But very fair point, thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council? Yes, I see a hand in the back of the room. How are you? Should you so choose, please share with us your name and the address, and speak into the microphone for our home audience. You can lower that, it comes down.
Okay, my name is Franny Kustany, I live at 1421 Fourth Street in Calistoga. I've been coming. been coming to Fourth Street since I was 10, and, and I'm homeowner, homeowner for over 30 years. And one thing I wanted to address was my neighbor, Noreen, too. She mentioned about the parking. And one thing that wasn't mentioned is that we have one-way parking. We cannot park on the other side of the street. So those little spaces are extremely valuable. And now we have new neighbors that have more trucks and all that type of thing. And so with this huge property and more cars, then that is going to be more of a problem. And also, too, I am worried about the schoolchildren coming back and forth. And now there's, there's going to be another driveway to worry about. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. You set a record tonight, 48 seconds. Anyone else? All right, I will close the public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion. Questions of staff, et cetera, or clarifications?
I guess I would just like to, when this goes back, assuming we send it back to Planning Commission, I would like them to pay close attention to the location of the trash issue, and specifically, obviously, the open space requirements, and the questions that were raised about setbacks, specifically as it pertained to the interior or the back of the property and near the parking area. Generally speaking, I agree, it's, it's a bit too, too large. I would like to see things, you know, scaled back. I'm in, you know, we're not going to change the zoning. The property owner has every right to develop the type of development that he's planning. But I just think he should be mindful of his neighbors and the opinions expressed at the council, and hopefully have him scale things back a bit so that it fits better within the, in the neighborhood.
Councilmember Kraus, I see you leaning forward.
Yes. I guess in a nutshell, I think that we should not, as the city council, be doing the design work on this. I don't think the Planning Commission should be either. I recognize the need in this community for additional housing. And the appellant realizes the need for additional housing as well. Affordable housing, as well as workforce housing, you know, we've, we go through all these terms quite often. I think there was some wisdom when the zoning designation, R3 on a corner lot, was supposed to be 10,000 square feet. This lot, I understand, is about 9,200 square feet, if, if what I've been told is correct. And I think that's, that's the rub here. The lot is irregularly shaped, and it's not 10,000 square feet. If it was 10,000 square feet, this would be probably a much easier fit. It'd be an extra 800 feet there to, for setbacks and all kinds of stuff. So given the fact that it's an irregularly shaped lot, it's a little smaller than we'd like to see, R3B, I, I think that this is too intense. Now, whether there's a reduction in the number of bedrooms, a reduction in the number of units, increased grassy area and everything, I'm not designing the place. But I think it needs to be smaller. And whether that means the council says, okay, instead of four units, go to three units, I don't have a problem with granting some kind of a variance at, at some future time to go to a threeplex. I don't have a problem, and I realize the planning department's going to have a kitten here when I say this, I don't have a problem with a duplex on the, on the property, or townhouses. I don't have a problem if the, the original applicant comes back and says, I want to build a single-family house. That's what I wanted to do in the first place. And then they got caught up in all this stuff. So my bottom line is, smaller in this case is better, given the shape of the lot, size of the lot. The other issue that I would like to see happen with whatever comes up is that a story pole be installed so that neighbors can see what the height looks like in comparison to their homes. And there are rules that we have about where the story pole is supposed to be placed so that people can see it. And, you know, it's supposed, neighbors are supposed to know when it goes up and like that. So, excuse me. That's my take on it. I'm, I'm, I'm thinking it goes back to the Planning Commission with, with recommendations to make it significantly smaller, and that a story pole get put in, and that if going smaller means less units, that's okay with me, anyway.
Thank you. Director Goldberg, what is the city's position, or I shouldn't say position, policy on story polling? I know it's not something we have done or do-do here.
No, do-do.
No, we do not do.
Not that I'm familiar with. Not as a matter of course. That may have been done for other projects, but I haven't been...
But, but I also don't, I don't think that's going to, I mean, two-story...
It's a two-story building.
It's clearly allowed. So I don't think it's going to drive or change projects, where typically a story pole would be something on the front end of a development.
If you're at...
Decisions are made.
If you're, if you're concerned about the visual aesthetics of a project up in the hills, I've seen it done then. I don't know of what other projects it was done for here, but we don't routinely require them. It's a, it's a two-story structure.
Councilmember Lopez Ortega or Councilmember Barnes? Who'd like to, Councilmember Lopez Ortega, please.
Yes. Even though I agree that we need more housing in Calistoga, I, to me, this project is, is very big. And it doesn't, I don't think it goes well with the neighborhood. It's a nice project, I will say, and it's very needy here in Calistoga. But I think, as Gary said, we don't going to design the project. But I think they should take in consideration the neighbors who live close by, and they should be part of this plan development. Also, the plan should take consideration on the impact, you know, of the development. I think a single-story unit will be more appropriate for the, for the neighborhood, and, and they should take in consideration all the impact around the neighborhood.
Councilmember Barnes?
Yeah, I'm pretty much in agreement with most of the comments made before me, with the exception of Gary's, "single-family dwelling or duplex." I do not agree with that. It is zoned to be a multi-unit apartment, whether three or four, I think is okay. Much has been made tonight about parking, and the lack of it on that street, and the fact that it is parking on one side only. I know it can't be parking on both sides because then you, in effect, would have only one car able to go the length of the street without meeting another car. But I did a little test. I walked the entire neighborhood on Saturday, from 11 until 1:00. I walked Second Street, Third Street, and Fourth Street, and Washington, and Fairway, between those streets, and I talked to a fair amount of people. Now, this is during the farmer's market. There were parking spots available on all three of those streets during the park, during the farmer's market. I came back later that afternoon and that evening, Saturday evening, there were still parking spots. I came back Sunday morning, when everybody should be home. There were still parking spots. I came back Saturday, Sunday night, when everybody should be home. There were still parking spaces. And I met with the, Mr. Stambor on Monday morning at his house. There were a lot of parking spots available. Now, I understand that's a work morning, so a lot of people were at work. So I'm not so sure that the problem of parking is as severe as the residents say. But I, they're anecdotal only, and it's only for three days. I don't live there. I don't put up with what they put up with all the time. So I'm not sure. What I am sure of is maybe we ought to move the one-way parking or one-sided parking to the other side of the street. And that was a suggestion that Mr. Stambor made.
I referred to Washington.
Well, you were referring to Washington.
Because there's no way to...
Well, I...
You can't see when you get out of Fourth Street.
I, I agree, but I thought you meant Fourth Street, simply because the same angle would then be taken away. But you meant Washington Street. Well, we could change them on both of them then. But I'm not trying, and I see Noreen back there, I'm not trying to denigrate the citizens of that street on the parking, but I'm not so sure it's that big a problem.
But I was going to say, there was a time when the city wanted to do this on Fourth Street, and at that time, we gathered in East Street, and we saw the side of the street going out parts. And the residents had to take to the children, and the people who were there, there are, in fact, more parking lanes in Fourth Street.
Well, yeah, that, that was one of the things I was going to bring up, that there are less driveways and things to, to block it on that side. And/or at the city level, could we make that a one-way street? Would that relieve congestion? I don't know. Just some thoughts.
We'll send that to Public Works. They'll love that idea.
Well, when we repave it, whenever we get, whenever we get there, we're, we're trying to get them home.
Not in this lifetime.
We, we could do that.
No, we're closed. We're going to end up with the same result. So save that comment for...
After one way street has passed.
Okay, got it. Fair enough.
Yes, it is.
Technically, you can go either way, though, right?
[laughing]
All right. Anything else?
No, I'm fine.
All right. So first off, Donna Higgins, is she still here? Fantastic job. Very different than the first time you and I come together. So I, I appreciate your fact-based delivery. All of those points have been recorded. Recommendation will be to identify that for Planning Commission. But also want to make sure that you're all clear on the points that the Planning Director made. Some of the points in your appeal are not a basis for denying the project in the future. So I think we're all clear on that. Okay? I could go through the whole list. It's all been captured. It's here. A strong recommendation I would make is the applicant who had the opportunity to speak during public comment, not required to, I strongly recommend, as we do to all parties who build projects, talk to, talk to your neighbors. You're not required to do so, but I would suggest you do so. I would assume that there is probably a building representative or an architect in the room. Take all of this, re-watch this video. This is all going to be deja vu all over again in front of the Planning Commission. You can take some actions between here and when that is scheduled to make some compromises that may be achievable. I, too, along with Councilmember Barnes, this is an R3 area. You do not have to like that it's R3. You do not have to acknowledge that it's been R3 since 1963. This community, which is a very involved and engaged community, some of you in this room, every time the general plan comes up for review and discussion, you are very involved in that. Be aware, and as early as 2014, this community made a decision that when a single-family house comes down in an R3, it is encouraged, it is your right to go higher density there. So unless the applicant wanted to make a single-family house, they are well within their right to go multi-unit. The other issues will let stand, and I believe that the Planning Commission can work through. But prior to that public hearing with the Planning Commission, I strongly suggest the applicant, your architect, sits with the planning department, sits with some of your neighbors, and tries to work this out. What I'm very happy to hear tonight, candidly, is that the vast majority of the neighbors from where this was a couple of months ago have understood and appreciated that multi-unit is allowed here, multi-unit is more than likely going to be here, and then we move on from there. Okay? So we'll make these recommendations to the Planning Commission. So I do not believe, well, I, do I have to move this, or by consensus can we remand this back to the Planning Commission?
We have to deny it.
I would recommend you deny the appeal and refer back to the Planning Commission.
All right.
With, with the, Lynn, Craig, do you feel like you have a confident understanding of what the issues have been discussed? We've taken notes. Or should we go through them all again, one by one?
Before there's a vote, I'd like to hear what the recommendation going to the Planning Commission is.
I have a list of about 14 items.
Well, they, specifically, they have to deal with the one particular open space issue, but then they're going to take all of this into consideration.
If you, Lynn, if you don't mind, and Lynn and I will compare notes tomorrow morning. We'll spend a lot of time doing it, but I just want to make a couple of comments that I've, that I've shared here. Specific items that we're looking at are, we're looking at the lot size issues. We're making, we're looking at front yard designations. Any item identified on a map, we're making sure that it's clear, understandable, legible. We're looking at open space requirements. We're looking at parking requirements. We're going to look at trash can location. We're going to look at parking spaces, either undercover or open air. We're looking at driving on the setbacks. We're looking at the buffer between lots and driveways. We're, we're verifying flood zones. We are also referring to extensions into setbacks to clarify that those are, those are adequate. From the city's perspective, I want to be very clear so that there's no misunderstanding. When the city has to look, when city staff has to look at code and interpret code, we're looking, in some ways, it's black and white. Does it meet this requirement that's here? And in some cases, like we were recently made aware of, it doesn't meet the requirement we bring into your attention. When we talk about the size, the scope, how big it is, the city doesn't take a position, generally, the Planning Commission doesn't take a position on what size of room can be here, or how many rooms there can be. So as, as the mayor mentioned, and just for additional clarification, to create harmony and balance when a new project comes into any community, we highly, highly suggest that the applicant work with neighbors. If they want to use this community room to hold meetings, they're more than welcome to it. But the city doesn't, we don't try and influence projects by saying it's too large. Shorten it, or make it less than, we make sure that the setbacks are met, and so on and so forth. Those are the key items I have. There may have been a few others that myself or Lynn made note on that we'll verify.
Angle the fence on the corner. Use solid fencing in front of the trash bins. Consider relocating the trash bins elsewhere. More accessible space for the last parking separation for tree preservation. One dedicated bicycle parking space. And...
Under carport.
Yeah, the, the width of the parking spaces.
You guys hit all the ones I have as well.
Does the zoning designation allow three units instead of four on that location?
Allows anything above a duplex.
Okay. As long as that is in there somehow, that at least consideration be given by the Planning Commission to allowing a, a triplex in there. And it might be necessary just for the setbacks and lot size, but...
But Lynn, one, just question I have, is it, does the lot, would it, would it allow for the splitting to do two duplexes and have the driveway down the middle to kind of alleviate some of the massing? Reduce the massing?
Can't picture how that would work on this property. Yeah, it's specific...
The L shape is the problem.
...calls for multifamily residential, which is three or more attached units.
All right. Any further questions of the council? I thank everyone for their patience. For procedural reasons, and with no offense intended, I'm going to deny, motion to deny Mr. Stambor's appeal. I have a motion by myself. I have a motion by myself, I have a second by the Vice Mayor. Is this a roll call issue?
And send it to Planning.
First, we have to do that.
Yep, to you if you want a roll call?
No. All those in favor? Okay, well, let's roll call it. Everyone's hesitating.
Councilmember Kraus?
Aye.
Councilmember Barnes?
No.
Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Aye.
Mayor Canning?
Aye. So the appeal is denied. I will make a further motion that we remand this project, this project back to the Planning Commission with the suggestions for consideration, as well as to make modifications with the applicant to meet the current code.
Second.
We have a motion by the mayor and a second by the Vice Mayor. Do I need a roll call, or can we all? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you very much for your patience. Moving on to general government, just when you thought the fun was over. Consideration of a resolution to accept the total compensation study report prepared by Coff and Associates. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution. We will wait two minutes to get everyone out of the room who wants to go. I promise you, this report is riveting if you want to stick around.
Sure.
Going to give ourselves a raise.
I know. We're all going to give ourselves a raise while you leave. That was a joke.
Thank you.
Yeah. I can double my $200, Jeffrey? Wow.
As a matter of fact, that's what the report says.
All right. With that said, taking us through this item this evening will be City Manager Feek. Dylan, thank you.
Yes, I'll be very brief and allow someone else to speak in front of you about the item which I'll introduce just in a minute. Katie, how do you pronounce your last name? Koneko. All right. Council, what you have before you tonight is just a review of our total compensation package for city employees. Katie Koneko has been representative of Coff and Associates. We used them back in 2014 when we did this similar study. At the time, we actually did a total classification and compensation study. Because we had the classification set this time, we really looked at just the compensation package, although there was one or two positions that we specifically looked to make sure they were in the right classification. I won't spend a lot of time, Katie, you've been sitting, waiting through, learning a lot more about how our local government works than you probably care to. We appreciate your patience, appreciate you being here. If you don't mind, invite you to come up to the dais and walk our city council through the presentation that you've got tonight. Council, just so you're aware, this is just the report of the information. There's nothing that we're doing tonight, so contrary to what the mayor thinks, we're not actually approving an increase for the elected officials.
Wishful thinking.
This is just the data that we have collected based on other comparative agencies, so that when future decisions need to be made, we're making them based on market data.
Katie, I will promise you our undivided attention if you promise me one thing.
Yes.
You will not be discussing setbacks, parking, or garbage pails.
I will not.
Okay. In that case, the floor is yours.
It's amazing how I cleared the room.
Don't take it personally.
No, that's a great compliment. You're good at it.
Thank you for having me here this evening. I recognize a few faces from the last time I was here back in 2014. I wanted to spend this moment just really to talk about our process and methodology, our findings and recommendations for the total compensation study, and just to highlight that this is intended to be a tool for your future decision-making in looking at employee salaries. Before we began this study, there's always the survey elements that we need to work with our clients to determine, that being the comparator agencies, the group of agencies that we're going to be surveying, the benchmark classifications, or the classifications that we're going to be surveying in these other agencies, and then the benefit data that we're going to be collecting. When I worked with the city back in 2014, we spent more time looking at the comparator agencies. We conducted a very thorough analysis where we looked at a number of different criteria, such as geographic proximity, full-time equivalence, expenditures, cost of living, services provided. And all of these factors were rated and ranked against each other to try to find a group of comparators that most closely mirrored the city of Calistoga. And it's that same list of 11 comparators that we move forward with in 2018 in this study. This is the list of comparator agencies. We selected 28 benchmarks to survey. I think most of them were similar or the same benchmarks that we used in 2014, although there were a few classifications that were new and some that the city wanted to gather data on for perhaps future positions. In order to get a good apples-to-apples comparison and consistent data from each of the agencies, we create, we call it demographic profile. We always survey the top step in the salary ranges at each of the comparator agencies when we're recording base salary, when we're focusing on retirement, because of PEPRA, so many agencies have multiple tiers that they offer for retirement benefits. We choose the classic tier to survey because, you know, these surveys are intended to look at compensation from the recruitment and retention lens, and that's still the tier where there's most variances between agencies. And so anybody who's looking to join an agency or leave an agency is going to be focusing on that classic tier if they're in the PER system currently. And then anybody who's new to the PER system would all fall under PEPRA, and they'd all have similar retirement benefits. So we focus on the classic tier, and then we look at the benefits received by a five-year employee who has a family. So that's what we go through and collect as we're analyzing each of these agencies. And the benefits data that we focus on is retirement. This is, what we'll be recording is from the employer's perspective, so these are the benefits that they would be paying for related to PERs, social security, any other deferred compensation contributions, such as a 457 or 401A plan, the health insurances that are paid for by the employer for an employee plus family, it's related to health, dental, vision, long-term, short-term disability. We look at leaves that are offered, holidays, vacation. This is where the five-year employee becomes important, so we look at the accrual rates of somebody who's been with the city or the agencies for five years, and then any administrative or personal leave that might be offered to that classification. And so we're picking up the benefits that an employee would receive just by share employment, so no other conditions attached. Sometimes there can be differentials or additional pay for meeting other conditions. And then if there are any other benefits that are offered to employees just by share employment, such as auto allowances or uniform allowances, we would pick those up as well. There's a lot of time spent on the data collection. We're looking for a match within each of these agencies that's at least 70% similar. Every agency has a different structure and certainly a degree of services that they provide in each of the functional areas. And so there's a lot of time looking at description to description, the purpose of the positions, the type of duties performed, the education, the experience that are required. And so we want to make sure that we have a composition of data that is at least 70% similar to what's occurring here in the city of Calistoga. So, you know, we pull as much information as we can from online sites and then follow up with discussions with human resources and sometimes departments to get a further clarification of how they're structured. Oh, you can't see this, but it is in the report. This is a summary of the results. It lists the, this is actually 22 of the 28 classifications that were surveyed. There were three classifications that we were not able to get sufficient data on. So we have to have at least four matches in order to provide any recommendations on the market median.
What were those positions that...
That's, I didn't write this down, but I can look it up for you very quickly here.
After you finish up, you can tell us later.
Okay. So, and then there were three classifications that we surveyed that did not have a current salary. So we were not able to provide a percentage difference. But this lists the 22 where we were able to get data on the market median for the classifications, and it lists from high to low, above market to below market, for base salary and then total compensation. And the three that we were not able to get sufficient data for were the chief wastewater plant operator, the chief water plant operator, and the fire engineer.
Did it get data on the fire engineer? Seems like that's a fairly common rank.
The firefighter, we were, but not the fire engineer. That's a classification that you often see maybe in larger organizations, but not necessarily in the sized organizations that we were serving. So overall, the market survey results indicated that the base salaries were about 3.3% below median, and they ranged from 8.6% above to 4.9% below median.
14.9%.
14.
You said four.
I say four, oh, I'm sorry, 14.9. And then total compensation results were 1.2% below. So you can see the difference between the 3.3 and the 1.2, that the benefits actually put the city in a more competitive position. When we looked at base salary, 14 out of the 22 classifications were within 5% of the market, in which we consider to be competitive. In total compensation, 10 of the 22 were within 5%. We actually saw movement to, for classifications that rose above 5% of the market when we included benefits in the calculation. So in base salary, there were two classifications that were above market. When we looked at total compensation, five were above market by more than 5%. And then when we looked at base salary, there were six classifications below market by more than 5%, and that remained when we looked at total compensation. There were six classifications. They tended to be management classifications that certainly our experience in the market is that there's heavy competition for management positions in the market right now, so we're seeing salaries rising at a quicker pace. I mentioned that your benefits did put you in a more competitive position. We attribute that primarily to the retirement benefits. While there were eight comparators that offered enhanced formulas, so greater formulas in the baseline, which the city of Calistoga does, there were three out of the 11 that paid a portion or all of the member contributions. So the cities were picking up the employees' portion of PERs. There were five comparators that required a contribution towards employer retirement costs. So this was a trend that we noticed that has been occurring particularly in this region over the last few years, that agencies are asking for employees to contribute to increases in employer costs. There was one other agency that paid social security. And then in health, dental, and vision, the city was particularly competitive where only one comparator contributed more, if you looked at those. And then the final slide here is just a comparison, since we did the study back in 2014, I thought it would be interesting to see the progress that you've made in being competitive to the market. I know when we came in 2014, a survey had not been conducted for a while. And so looking at these numbers, we're focused on first the top monthly salary in 2014, and of course, the current salary in 2018, the market placement based on the data that we obtained in 2014 and 2018, and the difference between those numbers in percentage both in 2014 and 2018. So you can see there were significant double-digit percentages below market back in 2014, and the city clearly in the last four years must have moved to address some of the shortfalls. And now you're seeing a more competitive overall positioning, with just about six classifications falling below market, more than 5%. So at this point in time, you know, we would develop the draft narrative reports, we've obtained the market data, the city looked at the market median back in 2014 to move forward with in making compensation recommendations. We recommend the market median because it tends to negate the influence of very, very high-paying agencies or low-paying agencies, and really focuses on where most agencies are clustered by looking at that exact center data point as part of your decision-making, and you'd want to look at the market median, if that makes sense, as your compensation philosophy going forward. We designed a compensation structure, a range system, very standard and similar to what you have now, which is a range system with five steps, 5% between each step, 2.5% between each range. We went ahead and made recommendations based on the latest market data, using the total compensation differences to place all of your job classifications within a structure. And then, of course, the city would go through and look how each individual employee would be paid and relative to that new structure. And then just continued maintenance, looking at COLA and any other market differences that might occur until the next study. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, the question that I had. You remember what it was?
I do. And it was the...
I think she identified it.
The chief water plant operator, wastewater plant operator, and the fire engineer. Yes.
Dylan, I remember we authorized this to be done. Is this part of the MOUs for the various labor groups that we agreed to do this, or was this something we decided to do on our own?
I don't remember the last time we did it. This time, we intentionally did it just in preparation of the MOUs expire December 31 of this year. So we did this to have the information before we negotiate new labor contracts.
Okay.
But it was part of our MOU last time around, which is why we did it.
I kind of remember, we've created a couple of new positions. The firefighter position is a new position that we've created here. The senior planner assistant to the city manager is a new position that we've created. When I went through this, I noticed that although we haven't even talked about creating fire captains, fire captain is in this. And I guess one of the things is, have the labor groups seen this as yet?
No. No, they have not. This is the first, I mean, it was published with the agenda last week, but this is the first time this has been made.
All right. And naturally, they're going to want to make comments, but their appropriate avenue to make comments is going to be through the meet-and-confer process. Is that it?
Well, the study and the findings are what they are, but to weigh in on, you know, now, as Katie was saying, now it's up to us to take the study and use it the way we see fit. The council's going to set policy on the pay scales, we're going to adopt pay scales. So they will be weighing in on it, we will be using it. I wanted it to come to council first, and I've actually started meetings.
This is something we would be doing in an open session, or this is done in a closed session because of negotiations?
When the actual negotiations happen, that's done in a closed session. But the report, you know, it's a public document, and we want it to be made public, and this is what the market data says for our positions. And so we'll use this, and our negotiating team will use this, both when we meet with city council to discuss our strategy and approach for the new labor contracts, but also when the city negotiating team is meeting with the different labor groups.
And we're confident in the accuracy of these things, because when I was looking it on, looking it over, particularly on the retirement side, I wasn't sure that the public safety retirement was accurate. I think it said 2% at 50 or something like that. I don't, I didn't bring the, forgot to bring the full packet or full study with me.
It would be the benefits that...
That's all right, I couldn't find it right now anyway.
It would be the benefits that were in effect, that would be considered the classic tier, which were in effect before PEPRA was enacted. So that would be at December 31, 2012. You have multiple tiers.
Okay, so we were three at 55.
And that might have been...
At that time for public safety. And I forget what we were for, I think we were three at 60 perhaps, or 2.7 at 60. A similar benefit was extended to the miscellaneous employees at the same time that the public safety employees got... safety employees got, had a change.
I think we have clarification approaching.
Gloria's great at this. You start talking about this stuff, she's got it, you know.
So I just wanted to remind you, in May of 2012, we adopted a second tier, both miscellaneous and safety. So we have three tiers for each of the groups. And so she took the middle tier, the second tier, when she did her analysis.
That's the...
The tier that's the classic tier, it's what's considered the classic tier, and that is the tier that anybody who's in the PER system, if they were to join the city of Calistoga, that's the benefit level they would receive.
Okay.
So we find that to be the most valuable information to have from a recruitment and retention standpoint.
Okay, because, well, I don't want to...
And it may not be what most people are receiving.
I don't want to get into the discussion right now, because it's, I suppose it'll be more than academic later, but the way we hire people in, unless they're a prior PERs member, they come in at the, at the second tier.
That is correct. No one can join the first tier anymore.
Okay.
You know.
So they come in at second tier, and, anyway, okay, I think I got it, but...
Anyone else?
Other questions are concerning the city council issue in there, $400 per month was the median compensation for council members. I don't do this job for $200 or $400 a month, I just do it, which I think is probably the same case with everybody here. But I believe that there is some state law that governs how much compensation a council can receive for a city this size, and how quickly that compensation can be ramped up and when it can be ramped up. So do you have any knowledge as to how that works, or?
I don't have that at this point in time.
That would probably be a question for our city attorney.
It's no more than 10% per year you can increase.
Is that, is that what it is?
Correct. Until you hit, until you hit your max.
So I could, I could get like 20 bucks more.
That's 10%.
What is the max?
Then it varies by size. We're not near it.
I'm not worried. But anyway, okay, that's, that's all I got right now.
Any other questions? Anyone in the public have any questions about? Katie, thank you very much for that, I appreciate it.
Thank you for having me back.
And if there's anything you'd like to know about building a multi-unit complex in Calistoga...
I think I know it all.
Or not building it.
You can go into consulting now. All right, unless there's anything further to discuss, I will, what's that? I, and this is just receiving the report, we don't take an action, correct? All right, thanks, Katie. We will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is Tuesday, September 4, 2018. Thank you all very much, adjourned.